Morning, everyone. Commissioner Borgeson is not here with us today, so I will be running the meeting, so wish me luck.
Good luck.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We will now move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Here. First one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 24, 2014. Item B, call for a meeting is set Tuesday, July 22, is the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Oh, no, he didn't. I will do that. And I have to backtrack just for a minute. I apologize. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Next, citizens' comments on the Board of Equalization. Is anyone here in the chambers wishing to speak on the Board of Equalization? Okay, I see none. Next, we have resolutions. We has D, E, and F, a total of three of them. Is there any questions or comments? Next, we will move to the agenda of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Here. Next, the first one, A, is approval of minutes of the Board Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 24 of 2014. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, July 15, 2014. A complete listing is on file in the office of the Clerk Comptroller's Office, available on the Douglas County Clerk Comptroller's website. Any questions or comments? Please vote. I have to think what I'm doing. Okay, before we get to the consent agenda, we need, we have an emergency item to be, everybody should have this, an emergency item to be added to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to add this item to the consent agenda?
So, Madam Chair, the motion is to declare an emergency and add?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
You need to state the nature of the emergency.
The nature, okay.
And if you want me to give some background, I will.
The emergency item is approved special designated liquor license for DVLLC 1021 South 178th Street, Nebraska, 68118, for beer garden to be held July 12, 2014, from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM at Deja Vu Lounge, 1021 South 178th Street, Omaha, 68118. This is approval of a special designated liquor license.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask why this is an emergency?
Because it was, actually, Diane.
Sure. Carlson, can I change that over to you?
Sure. I can address that. The applicant sent the application to the State Liquor Commission, which is normal, but the State Liquor Commission mistakenly sent it to the City Clerk's Office instead of the County Clerk's Office. And so it wasn't until yesterday that the County Clerk's Office received it. There's just no, the event is going to be scheduled for July 12, and because the Board doesn't meet next Tuesday.
Okay.
There's just not time to approve it unless we add it today.
That's fine. I just wanted it, the reason public. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, did we vote on the emergency?
No.
Okay. Okay, we, please vote on the emergency.
We should have some red lights that flash or something.
Okay, with that, on the consent of the agenda, we have A through G plus the emergency item we just added. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Please vote.
I was gonna make one comment before we voted.
Yes, please.
If I could.
PJ?
The Deja Vu Lounge had this last year, as I recall. I didn't know there is anyone to speak to it. It seemed like it went well last year. I know I checked that. So, I think, you know, I'm in agreement to go ahead with this, so we can do the vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I vote? No.
Next, we have citizens' comments. We have a, we have Douglas County Health Center to give us a little bit of update about some fantastic news that they shared with us yesterday at our Board of Trustees meeting.
Good morning. I'm Sherri Glassnap. I'm the Director of the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center, and I'm here to introduce Cindy Bogonowski, and she's the Program Manager for our Mental Health Diversion and our Intensive Case Management Program.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Cindy.
I wanted to bring some staff with you, with me today, to let you know about an award we received for our Intensive Case Management Program. And if you remember, this is a program funded through Region 6 Behavioral Health for young adults who are age 18 to 24, who are leaving incarceration. And I did do a presentation, I think, in February or March on the program. So, every year, the National Association of Counties does an achievement award program, and on direction of Sherri Glassnap, we submitted Intensive Case Management for that, and we did win an award in the area of criminal justice and public safety for our Intensive Case Management Program. We also, we got a certificate and also are able to use this award banner in any publications or pamphlets we want to use. And, you know, we can write all the things we want, but really, the program is due to the dedication of the staff that serve the people that we work with, so I wanted to force them up here.
Yes, please do. Let's introduce your staff, please.
Evan Carter is in Intensive Case Management. Adrian Barlow, Intensive Case Management. And Ronnie Wilder is our Peer Support Professional.
Awesome. Well, thank you and congratulations. That's totally awesome. Thanks for all your hard work, everyone. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle?
I only like to say that, in my view, you are doing some of the most important work, serving the people that you serve. You're making a huge difference in their lives, and it's changing the community for the better, so I am a very enthusiastic supporter of what you do, and I'm especially proud that you received this award. It's really a great thing, and I'd like you to come by and shake all of our hands, if you don't mind.
Mark, I'll get to you in a second.
Congratulations and thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good work. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you, my dear. Thanks, hon. Awesome. Congratulations. Hi, awesome. Congratulations. Oh, that's super fantastic. Thank you.
Yes, and I'd like to state that I believe Mike speaks loudly for all of us on your service, so thank you.
Thank you again, guys, and congratulations. Great job. Okay, next, we have a presentation from Kathy Adair. It's Work Site Wellness Program on Healthy Directions. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I would have brought fireworks, but I don't think they let me shoot them off in here. But it definitely is a celebration. Today is the kickoff for our wellness addition, Vavari, the wellness vendor that we have chose to help us, assist us with wellness. I did bring some little things to pass out. This has been a long process for myself, as well as all of the Wellness Committee members that serve and have served since about 2009, when you allowed us to have a wellness program. We have the program designed with Vavari. That has been in implementation since April, and, which has been a long process, but we're there, and people are logging in. As of this morning, they have the ability to do that. The program that we have with Vavari is generally a 200-point program. It is based on points. Because we're at a half-year this year, starting in July, we are only going to require 150 points that the participant will need to acquire by December 1st in order to be awarded their 2014 incentive. And the incentive that they will be awarded will be a $75 Visa gift card that will be awarded sometime in January. Two mandatory items that they will have to participate in, in order to be part of the program, will be the biometric testing. I included in the packet the schedule that the biometric testing will be on worksite locations. We have four locations, the Civic Center, the Health Center, Sheriff's Department out West, and also the Corrections Facility. 10 different days, various different times, so that we can include all of the 24-hour operations. That will be worth 50 points. The other mandatory item will be the health assessment that they take right online on the Vavari portal site. That also will be worth 50 points. It's gonna take less than 10 minutes to answer some lifestyle questions. So, basically, they will have an additional 50 points that they will have to earn by December 1st in order to be awarded that incentive gift card. We're gonna also offer two different challenges this year. Generally, in a 12-month program, we would offer three or four challenges, but again, because we're a shortened year starting out, we will only have two challenges. Our first challenge, and Vavari is a very encompassing wellness vendor, so they have all these challenges set up. So, we don't have to think what we're gonna have for a challenge, which has been a challenge. But our first one will be a hydrate challenge. That's a four-week program, basically just to get you to drink water. You will earn points for each eight-ounce glasses of water that you drank, and you can earn up to 12 points per day. In the four-week period, if you earn 40 points, you will get 15 additional points towards your goal points. That will start in September 15, and that, again, will run for a four-week program. Then, in October, we will run a four-week challenge that is maintained for life. Basically, that is designed to prevent weight gain and encourage long-term weight maintenance. Again, a four-week program, and the details on that program will also be on their portal site. Other opportunities that an individual has to earn that additional 50 points above the mandatory points, preventive care checkups, your wellness checkup, dental checkups, vision checkups. Vavari has a lot of online courses that you can take. They have a monthly webinar. We have a webinar out there as of today, and even if you participate in the Corporate Cup Run, you can get additional points as well. I did wanna kind of walk through the website just a little bit. Once you get out to the myvavari.com website, you will get this particular login. You're going to pick the new user registration. I have already logged in, just so I make sure I could give the presentation correctly. So, I will go ahead and choose what I have already logged in on.
Kathy, just one second.
Sure.
Commissioner Boyle, did you wanna ask questions now, or did you wanna wait?
Only afterwards.
Okay. Commissioner Kraft? Okay. We'll have some questions afterwards, Kathy.
Okay. So, you're gonna pick a username. I think that has to be between five and, let me get there, five and 25 characters. No real specific requirements there, but you do have a requirement on the password, and on the password, they ask you for eight to 12 characters. They want you to use a upper and lowercase, and they would like you to use numbers and characters within that, so it makes it a little bit more secure. And please understand that this website is your own personal portal. Nobody else is going to go in there unless you would give them your password and login information. This is your personal site, so you will be able to do all the, all your, okay, here we go. Okay, so this is what it's going to basically look like when you get in on the program. You can see right here, it tells you our goal is 150 points. I will tell you in 2015, that will be 200 points. That's the normal program. Again, because we're in a shortened year, we're just doing the 150 points. So, let's see. It's trying to, okay, it's trying to load up. It has a real short little video that I would like to have shown you. See if we can get to there. And it just, every person that logs in to this site, well, there we go, will get this little shortened video. I don't know why this is giving me. Is there some reason, Sam, that I'm not getting? Keeps going back here. Well, for lack of having the video, it will say at the top, it'll say good morning, good afternoon, whenever you're on there personally, addressing you, so you know you're signed on for your site. Each one of these keys on the left-hand side, you can click on, the incentive, My Health. It'll give right here your health score. So, once you have done your biometric testing and you have done your health assessment, it will give you a health score. And every year that you would do this, it will tally that health score, so you can look and see if you are improving on that health score. Under My Care, it'll give you all the events and different challenges that we're having. Right now, our challenges aren't there, but they will be probably in the next month or so. But our events that we have are the screening days for the biometrics. You can go on and continue to view all. Like I said, there's 10 different days. I'm not sure. Okay, here's all of our screening days, and you will register for those screenings right online. These screenings are gonna take about 20 minutes, so my hope is that most all of our departments will allow their staff to be able to go and get these biometric testing. It is a blood draw, so they do ask that you are seven to nine hours fasting to have the most accurate results. We will also, at each one of these locations, have computers set up, so those individuals that would like to take the health assessment right online will be able to do so, so that they can get that done. They can also do this on their own home personal computer as well. The Learning Library, that, that, okay, we just lost it. This works a lot better when you do it at your own computer or at your desktop. I did try it several times and have individuals in our office be able to access this. As I said, when you first get onto that site, once you have registered or have registered and logged in, you will get a three-minute little video that basically walks you through about everything that I am telling you as well. You want me to just type it in?
Yeah.
Okay. There it is, right there. Okay.
Might need an upgrade slash.
My hope was that I could at least show you the video, because it is quite informative, and with hope it'll eliminate some of the calls that we would get on how to do this. It's probably about one of the easiest websites that I have used around. Okay. On the Learning Library, as I said, there's gonna be a lot of different webinars. Each month, they will have a new webinar. Okay. Why is it always doing that? Let me move that over here. For goodness sakes. Your computers are not very good here.
Did you just state that this is one of the easiest websites?
It's not the website, it's your computer access. Okay, for lack of having that, I'll just, I'll just kind of talk a little bit about it. I've given you one sheet page that shows all the different things that you can access out there. I think it's a good thing. We've sent out letters. If you are insured under the medical plan, either the PPO or the HSA, you are eligible to participate in this. So, those are the only eligible individuals at this point, and it's the employee/retiree that will be able to be a participant and be eligible to earn that incentive. Employees that are hired today and beyond can be part of the program, but they will not earn the incentive, because if you're hired today, you're not effective for 91 days, so you're not part of the medical plan until then. But we're gonna let them have access to the portal, so that they can go out there and maneuver and participate in some of the programs, but they won't be eligible for their incentive until the 2015 year. Because next year will be a full year, that $75 gift card will be increased anywhere from 100 to 125. We haven't determined that exactly. Vavari says, based on their clients, at least 50% participate. So, tomorrow and every Wednesday going forward for the next couple of months, and since April, we've had a conference call, an hour, hour and a half conference call with Vavari. We have a designated representative from them that I will deal with directly. They will give us numbers tomorrow as to how many people have logged in. I already know people have logged in, because I've gotten some information back, so it'll be interesting to see just in this short period of time from today until tomorrow. At 2 o'clock, we have a conference call, and I will shoot you an email just to let you know and keep you updated on how many people are participating. So, I think it's an exciting program. I think it will touch all of our population of employees, because of the fact that they can access this online, and they can participate in programs that not necessarily are in a specific timeframe or a specific time of the day. So, and really, truthfully, a lot of credit goes to our Wellness Committee, and I do wanna recognize all of those people, because they have been very supportive and right along the last few years on this wellness program. Jennifer Beishine from the Health Center, Dan Archie from the Youth Center, Dennis Ruckstuhl from the Treasurers Office, Connie Lehman and Phil Rooney from the Health Department, Susan Mormon from the Public Defender, Kevin Collin from Sheriff, Jane Faust from the County Clerk, Jane Alexander from the Clerk of the District Court, Lee LeJure, HR Director, Diane Badiato, Register of Deeds, Mike Boyle, and Mary Ann Borgeson have always been very supportive, as well as all of you. I thank you very much. This is going to be a great asset, I believe, to not only the employees, but hopefully to our medical plan and making healthier employee population. I think in the future, in the next couple of years, we will add a spouse to the plan, so that the spouses will be able to participate as well.
Commissioner Boyle?
I want to single out Kathy Adair as the driving force behind this, when she came to us some time ago now and asked for help in establishing a wellness program. And we did respond favorably, and we did give them some money, not a lot, but we gave them some. And, but I think it's really, Kathy, it was your drive, you're pushing, you're scheduling the meetings, and a lot of which I missed. I apologize for that.
It's okay.
That should be added, a little asterisk to the credit you gave me. But I really am very proud of you. I think you exemplify what county employees are really like.
Thank you.
Where you really dig in, do a job, and you bring it to perfection. I'm so excited about this program. I tried to sign on before it was able, and of course, I sent you an email saying, "Same old stuff's going on with these computers. What's going on?" And you wrote back.
You weren't the only one, so you won't have to feel too bad.
But anyway, I really am excited about it, and I intend to participate fully, and I hope everyone else will, too. Take advantage of this. This is a great deal. So, thanks a lot for your drive.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
And for your dedication to the county and to our employees. Thanks.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First, I'd like to point out something that regarding the biometric screening, because one of my questions was, I just had that done at my physician, but I see that you can go to your physician and just return with the completed physician lab form, which I do have.
And I was glad, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mark, because what you have to do is go out on the website, or we will have the form in our office, which is the physician form. If you've had your biometrics done from April to August, and you don't, you would prefer to do it at your physician's office, you take that physician form. Your physician will complete that form, send that directly to Vavari. Then, Vavari loads that information up there. Now, if I was able to get a little bit further in the website, you will see where you can look at your biometric results. When you have the biometrics done here, they take that information. Naturally, you don't get it right away, because it is a blood draw. They will load that information up, and you will go back out onto your website or on your portal, and you will get that information specifically on your website or on your particular portal.
And my physician has a patient portal that I can go on and look it up, so do I need to go back to him?
They have to fill that form out, and they have to sign that, and then they have to direct it to Vavari. So, you are not going to basically be entering anything into the Vavari system regarding that.
But I can't just bring the paperwork?
I, I believe that the physician's office needs to direct it to Vavari itself.
The other, the eight glasses, eight eight-ounce glasses of water a day, does coffee count?
No. Water. H2O.
Main ingredient in coffee.
Ice tea doesn't even count.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Kathy, thank you for all your hard work on this. This is totally awesome. I mean, you know, some of us, or most of us, or whatever, don't always think of trying to, you know, we may try to work on healthy, but if you have a little incentive, such as the gift card, I mean, that pushes people even a little bit more. So, I wanna thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Well, it's without your support, we wouldn't be where we are, so I appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, next, we have public hearings. The first one is addition to premise license Class C 102400 for Surfside Club Incorporated doing business at Surfside Club, 14445 North River Drive, Omaha, 68112. And this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this, please? Morning.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mike Walker, 8540 Blondo Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134. And I'm here just, I'm the owner, actually, the owner of the Surfside Club, so I'm here just to answer any questions in regard to the addition to the liquor license.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
I'm trying, from the drawings, this is a big area that you're adding, 150 by 180 with the walkway and all, but I can't figure out, where does the marina fit into this? Is this going around the marina? Is this going around the marina to the other side or what?
Actually, the marina is off, will be off to the south side of the drawing.
All right.
I didn't draw the marina in.
Okay.
Just because I, it's not going to be a licensed area. And, but this area here, we were thinking about using it for, like a catering, not catering, but a hall-type area. And then the building will actually be used as a pavilion, not a finished building, just a place for shade and to put food and beverage and so forth.
And the solar areas?
For the most part, everything will be outside.
And everything is fenced?
Everything, everything will be fenced, yes.
Okay, it will be. It's not yet?
It's not yet. The fire marshal is going to, we'll have to sign off on it, of course. We, we are waiting, I just need to call him to finish that detail and the State Patrol as well, because they measure it.
All right, but it'll be fenced before the liquor license takes effect?
Right, right. Yeah, when those guys stop out, they, we, it's such a large area, we didn't want to go to the expense prior to seeing if everybody was on board with it. And there hasn't been any opposition with any of the law enforcement, fire marshal. And I see we've kind of been pre-approved here, not pre-approved, but without opposition, looking at the agenda. So anyway, that was my reason for being here today, if there's any questions or if I can explain.
I'm glad you are here today, because I did want to know that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? I will close the public hearing with the will of the board.
Motion to approve.
Sir.
Please vote. Awesome. There you go. Motion passed. You're set to go and good luck with everything.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, have a great day.
You too.
We'll be out to see you. Good food.
I'm pretty much there every day.
Good food.
Okay, next on the public hearing is item B. We have budget hearing and adoption of proposed 2014-2015 Douglas County Budget. And I am going to hand this over to Commissioner PJ Morgan.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Excuse me, PJ, Mike, did you, Commissioner Boyle, did you have a question?
I'm going to wait until.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I said last week that I appreciate all the commissioners and others participating in all of the meetings very much. And Joe, I want to thank you for an outstanding job and we have been successful in not having a mill levy increase. And I'm not sure if you have any comments that you want to make at this time concerning the budget. I know Mary Ann has been very positive and been in all those meetings also, and I know she is sorry she's not here today to vote on this, but we wanted to have the vote. Is there anything, Joe, you want to add?
Yeah, maybe I'll just, a brief summary of where we're coming out on the budget. We've worked on the budget for the past four to five months. And as you said, PJ, we've been able to submit a budget for vote today that's balanced with no adopted tax rate increase or utilization of reserves to fund the projected expenditures. The proposed budget of $341.1 million is 12.6 million or 3.8% greater than the current year budget. The general fund budget of $174 million is 2.5 million or 1.5% greater than the current year budget. The key drivers of the increase are related to labor. We set out a guideline to all the departments and offices of a 1.5% increase in salaries. And then on top of that, there's been increased healthcare costs for medical, medical costs that have been a key driver of the increase. But generally, as you see in the general fund, there's about a percent and a half increase, which I think is within the guidelines that we submitted. The overall fund at 3.8% is higher, but that's primarily driven by funds that are not funded by property tax. The best example of that is road and bridge funding, which is projected to increase by $5 million as there's increased projects going on, but those are primarily funded through the gasoline tax and federal and state grants to the engineer's office. As we put together this budget, the assumption was that the overall county property valuation would increase for tax purposes by 1%. So that's what we factored in. And at this point, assuming the budget gets adopted and approved today, we'll hear, we'll receive the final tax rate with the final valuation on August 20th, 2014, at which time we would make the final submission to the state.
Okay, and I think, are there other questions? I wanted to mention also that in the last four years, three out of the four years, the county has not had, and it's important, not had a mill levy increase. And that's been the goal of this board, to work at that. And I want to thank the commissioners for that effort because I think it's important to note that. So I think we could take the vote or have some more discussion and public input.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I really want to congratulate and thank Commissioners Duda and Morgan for their leadership in opening up the process. It's been remarkable, it's pretty tedious, but it is well worth the effort to be able to have those open discussions with the department heads and elected officials where we can ask questions and do what we can to try to help them cut expenses. They have done a tremendous job as well. They have responded extremely well with making cuts in their budgets and with the letter that goes out. They've really done a terrific job. So it's been a team effort, which is really remarkable, to say the least. There's a couple of things that I want to mention. One is that at the Criminal Justice Committee meeting we had last Thursday, where the Omaha Police are involved, the Sheriff's Office, Corrections, Mental Health Units, Clerk of the District Court, all the judicial organizations are at the table. And one of the things that came up was the need for additional funding in the Mental Health Division, part of our budget. And I think we're, we need to consider somehow coming up with around $65,000 to fund a position that needs to be filled. I've kind of had a, I'm not a fan of guns and I know that gun control is going to be impossible to pass anywhere in this country. And so I think what we need to do is focus on another aspect of these shootings. And if you look what happened on the East Coast with all those children who were killed, the 26th Son in Sandy Hook, and you look at Santa Barbara, you look at all these shootings that have taken place, it's involving, it involves the, someone who is suffering a mental illness. The father of the shooter in Santa Barbara and the victim, I believe, I shouldn't call him a victim, but the father of one of the young men who died, who really seemed to have a lot of promise, has put together an effort to bring mental health services available to people, families who need them. And there are websites and all sorts of things that I think what we need to do is shift the spending in Douglas County and both the Health Department because it is a big health issue. I know Dr. Poor has talked about this before. But I think we need to begin to, really a big shift toward that. We need to begin to offer services that are real and effective 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to families that have members who are in trouble. Otherwise, these Facebook rantings and these telephone calls and all the rest of them are just going to be part of the history. We need to give them a way to respond. And I think one of the ways is to reinforce the services that we give to the mentally ill. I did have, I did ask Sheri to bring some people today, but because Commissioner Borgerson, I respect her authority as Chair of the Board, first of all, believe it or not. And so I asked her, told her what I had in mind, and she is very much attuned to this problem. And she asked that we delay a discussion of what's going on in the county. And it's pretty startling, at least I thought it was, when I listened to it at the Criminal Justice Meeting. And so next Tuesday, we'll have something on the agenda where Sheri will have some folks from Region 6 and so forth.
We don't have a meeting next Tuesday.
Oh, excuse me, week after.
There you go.
We don't have one then either.
January 9th, I think we have a meeting. We'll have a report talking about the urgency of this and as quickly as we can.
July 22nd.
July 22nd, okay. So anyway, I don't want to go on too much more about it, but I think we ought to be thinking about, and I've spoken to our numbers guy, and he seems to think that we ought to be able to figure out some way to come up with $65,000. And I think it's a reasonable amount. And I could ask Sheri, if you'd like, to just briefly talk about what that position is as briefly as possible, if you would, briefer than me, okay?
Sheri Glassnap, Director of the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. Commissioner Boyle is talking about one full-time position in our mental health diversion program. That is a intensive case management program that when individuals are screened at booking and corrections, there's a screening tool that triggers that there is a potential mental health issue. Cindy Boganowski screens that person and she works with the county attorney's office on a diversion plan so those individuals transition out of corrections. They follow up with our intensive case manager so they're not, they're not in corrections anymore. And that intensive case manager connects those individuals with all of the support systems that they need within the community. And the key goal for that program is to reduce recidivism in corrections. You've seen Cindy's stats previously. They have, it's somewhere between a 75 and 80% reduction in recidivism. She's presented fiscal numbers to you in regard to the potential cost savings. And then she's also presented to you information in regard to the person's own personal perception in regard to areas of their life domain and the increase that they feel in the positive impact the program's had on their lives. We could serve, the program is designed to serve anywhere from 10 to 15 individuals at a time. Right now, we're overcapacity. Each mental health diversion worker is currently serving 20. And when you're seeing people in the community daily and transporting them to all of their appointments, responding to crisis phone calls, that's a very intensive caseload. So we hope to expand that program. Any questions?
Great job summing it up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Duda, real quick, before I have you speak, just an FYI, this is a public hearing. It is still open. I've got a couple of commissioners who wish to speak, and after that, then I'll open it up to the public. Thank you. Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. Just, it always worries me a little bit when Commissioner Boyle and I are on the same side of something. But on this one, this is so cost-effective. It is not only more appropriate treatment for the population we're serving, it is more cost-effective for the taxpayer paying for these services. By adding $65,000 to the mental health diversion, we are perhaps keeping 20 people out of jail. And you really could just, I did not have a chance to discuss this with Dr. Foxall. I believe you really could just take that $65,000 out of the jails budget because they'll save more than that. We don't need to. The budget has enough room, we can work this in. So I'm not suggesting that. But I believe we will save more than we will spend by making this investment. But beyond that, it's more appropriate treatment for the people that are receiving it. We, as we get more and more mental health problems within our jail, anybody that we can give more appropriate treatment to and more cost-effective treatment to, we'd be certainly not to do that.
I agree. Thank you.
I agree too.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft.
And, you know, the mental health issue's been in the news tremendously. Over the past three months, USA Today has run numerous articles and a series of articles on it and the lack of beds in the communities across the country. Time Magazine has run articles, Omaha World-Herald has run articles. But something such as what we are doing with the diversion program is so tremendously helpful. And, you know, a few years ago, we got money out of the community mental health budget, which was earmarked, so to speak, for medication. Just think of how much we could have expanded that had we had that money in their budget for additional medication for people who need it and cannot afford it. The support system that Sheri Glassnap, the head of the community mental health, was talking about is for those who are getting out of the correctional facilities. There are other things, but access to housing, access to a personal support system, whether it's a family member, a friend or counselor, medication, because many of these people have no money to buy their medication, counseling. And there is a tremendous lack of beds in our community for people who are mentally ill. And the thought came to me as Mike was, Commissioner Boyle was talking, when these taxing authorities for the medical units come to before us, could we tack on as a condition of our approval that they provide X number of psychiatric beds? Let's give that some thought. I don't know if we can legally do that, you know, it's a little bit of arm twisting. I don't know if they'd be willing to do it because it might be a whole new ballgame for some of the hospitals. I don't know if it is or not, but let's keep looking. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, something that Commissioner Kraft said really hits home. The housing issue is really a big one. And there, I know that there are ways through the Douglas County Housing Authority and the Omaha Housing Authority to provide this kind of housing, and there are tax credits and so forth. And there are people of means who like to buy those tax credits to reduce their tax bill. That's how a lot of this housing has been built, particularly over at Sienna Frances House, which is really a real model for what can be done. There's also something called inclusionary zoning, which I took to Senator Chambers about five years ago, and he liked the idea a lot. And what inclusionary zoning does is that, today we read in the World-Herald, a picture of the redevelopment of the old arena over on Capitol Avenue. What inclusionary zoning does, it says that, well, when you create, when a developer creates 250 units, that a portion of those units, either onsite or built somewhere else, has to be committed by the developer. In other words, if you have 250 units at standard rates, you have to have 10 or 20 at reduced rates. And that take in Section 8 housing and so forth. And many times, it's right inside the same facility. And another thing is, the way laws are written in communities that do have inclusionary zoning, that the housing that is being used by those who are being assisted cannot look different from the housing of those who are not receiving. So it's an interesting program. Excuse me. The difficulty is that, first of all, we don't have the authority to do it. The city of Omaha would have to do it and the state legislature would have to enact it. And it works in really big communities where, you know, Los Angeles and San Francisco and so forth, and New York. And I'm not sure it would work in Douglas County, but it's something to look at. And I think we ought to be exploring that in our strategic planning, ways to respond to this problem that are maybe a little bit off the wall or a little bit unusual. So anyway, I'm really excited about what Sheri has done and the information that came out. And I'm very happy to see this kind of support from the board. And I know that Joel Lorenz is, I've talked to him about it, and he agrees with us, there should be a way to fund this. So I think it's a great idea and I appreciate everyone contributing to it. Excuse me.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers.
No, I just want to briefly make, Commissioner Boyle brought up something about the housing authorities. I just wanted to know for record that they, about two or three years ago, they were actively involved with a meeting Commissioner Borgerson had to create, fuse housing. And it was basically supportive housing for those with mental health. The grant, because of money availability, got turned down by HUD. But they asked us to resubmit because they thought the idea had merit. We were going to resubmit this year but ran into roadblocks with the landlords. So basically, if that's what is seriously being considered, the city council, I guess, is in their realm, but we need to have some discussion and really ramp up for some pushback that will come from the landlords if that's the move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, and when I was on the Yes, and when I was on the Omaha City Council, that's an issue that I've brought up a number of times and discussed. Inclusionary zoning may be called something else, but my uncle lives in an area in a multimillion-dollar house in Silver Spring, Maryland. And just a block and a half from here, they have his house, when they did the development, there was inclusionary housing, and a lot of people were against it. It was going to ruin the neighborhood. But what they found out is that people who have businesses near the neighborhood have employees that people who live in this house wouldn't normally, these houses normally wouldn't take, you know, being a barrister, being a bartender, being a lawnmower, et cetera. He has also, over the past 20 or 25 years that he's lived there, said it may not have helped tremendously the person who was living in the house or the housing was intended as much as it helped their children. Their children growing up, grow up seeing a different type of community than if they were in a project or in an area of heavily subsidized housing. He says many of these kids who probably would not have been a success, he's watched them grow up, mowing his lawn first and, you know, working for him in his business later in the printing business. He says this is the best thing that ever happened. Now, I know some people are going to think we're off the topic of budget, but the whole world is an accounting sheet, and the things we're talking about affect our budget. Now, it may be far-reaching and far-flung, but this is a good and it's appropriate topic. Thank you, Mr. Boyle, Commissioner Boyle, for bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we can have questions or comments from anybody in the public.
Good morning. My name is Doug Kagan, 12320 Williams Street, and I represent Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Overall, we are pleased with your budget for the next fiscal year, primarily because there is no tax hike involved. Particularly, we approve of your requirements for the various departments to trim their budgets and not seek supplemental appropriations, and your kind invitation to our group to attend your finance committee budget meetings, which were very informative. However, we continue to urge the board to find ways to stop the upward spiral in labor costs, especially for employee health care. Also, we continue to ask you to find means to cut the increasing costs at the health center and implement additional recommendations given you by the consultant several months ago. The budget balanced this coming fiscal year, but the county still faces an annual fundamental structural deficit of several million, a systemic gap between projected expenditures and revenues. Therefore, our taxpayer group would like to continue to work with you immediately on future strategies to cure this problem permanently in order to avoid future property tax hikes. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Morning.
Good morning. Jeff Stevens, 14518 Webster Circle, and I volunteer for NTF. And I guess, first of all, Commissioner Kraft, I enjoyed your comments and that discussion about inclusionary zoning and those types of things. You know, the board does need to address things at a strategic level, and I think those kinds of discussions are important regardless of where the road leads us. So those are big-picture things that ultimately we're here to make things better. You know, some believe in more fiscal restraint than others, but I think you don't know those ideas until people bring them up. So I do appreciate that discussion, and I don't think it was a far-off tangent. I just wanted to say that. I'd like to echo Doug's comments about being relieved that there is no levy increase in the property taxes. Wish to commend all the departments that came in at their target budgets that you'd set, and I hope that departments that didn't will focus more on improving their fiscal discipline. I'm also pleased that the board is conducting the strategic budget meetings and hope they continue in the future, because as long as the cost, the increase of the cost is greater than the increase in anticipated valuations, we're going to have these budget challenges. So, thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Any other comments from the public, elected officials, or department heads? Any, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyle.
Excuse me. And, thank you. In response to what was just said, first of all, I appreciate, and I know that all the commissioners appreciate your involvement, citizens coming to those meetings and reminding us of what our goals should be, I find very helpful. And I personally agree there are places to be cut, but I've done that battle before. Maybe one of these days I'll win, but anyway, they're not significant cuts. One thing I want to mention to you that Commissioner Borges has brought up as probably the centerpiece of our legislative program this coming year, will be asking the legislature to take over the responsibility of the cost of guarding that light and expense, and that's approaching $4 million. And so it is a state-mandated service. All of our, all the services we deliver are mandated by state law, and this is one that seems to be, one that might make a great deal of sense for them just simply to take over and pay for. So I believe that's going to be one of our, if not our, primary pieces of legislative activity, and I think it's a really great idea that she's come up with. So I wanted to mention that to you. That could be $4 million right off the top.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan, anything else before I close the public hearing?
No, not at this time. Again, I do want to, and I've said it before, but I think it is worth saying again, want to thank the department heads, elected officials for their efforts, cooperation, and cooperation in the future. You know, so many people run for these offices and talk about lowering the spending efficiencies and so on. We want to really make sure we continue those efforts, and all of us included. I also want to commend Joe Lorenz. You know, the years I've been here, almost four years, Joe came on at the same time, and I think we were real winners when we got Joe Lorenz as our finance director. We have a great staff, but I, we're talking about finance, and Joe, I want to personally thank you for the great cooperation and being open-minded and listening to all of us, regardless of the side. And I think it's commendable how fair and open you are in treating all of us. So thank you for that good service.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. I also want to say thank you for everyone who worked on the budget, for everyone who attended our finance, attended our budget meetings. I'd also like to thank Joe Lorenz and his staff, and I also like to thank Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Duda on the finance for all the hard work and everything, the hours that you guys also put in on this. Thank you very much.
And I appreciate that. I want to mention one other thing. Mark worked with me, Mark Kraft, Commissioner Kraft, in the very beginning in opening all the meetings. I know, Mike, you were encouraged by what we did.
Yes.
In those meetings, but Mark was a key player in that too, so I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Duda.
I would like to add one more quick thing during our public hearing here, and that's some information that came out yesterday at the trustee meeting out at the health center. And I'm sure we'll be hearing these figures more often. The year wasn't quite ended yesterday. It ended midnight last night, of course. But the latest figures that they had, that the health center was over $3.5 million to the good for the budget that we approved last year. When we talk about the HMA and everything, we're, we are seeing the results. We are doing a better job out there and becoming more cost-effective. More things are still happening that I think will continue to improve its financial outlook. But I just wanted to share that good news, the $3.5 million. I don't ever remember a department coming in that good relative to budget.
Thank you. And I also want to thank all the elected officials and department heads for all your hard work in coming in on a flat budget. Thank you, everyone. With that, I will close the public hearing, and what is the will of the board?
Make a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
Commissioners?
Yes, Patrick.
Sorry to interrupt. My apologies. Before you adopt the budget, there needs to be a motion to amend the proposed budget to add $70,000, $65,000, I'm sorry, $65,000 to the CMHC budget.
Oh, I'll make that motion. Second.
Please vote.
So this is only on the amendment?
Only on the amendment. Now we will take, what is the will of the board on the adopted budget?
Second.
Please vote. Thank you. Next, we will move to committee meetings. The first one is the finance committee by PJ Morgan and Claire Duda.
We're going to take six months off now.
Maybe six weeks. I'll amend it to six weeks, as presented.
Thank you. Next, we have human, human resources. Commissioner Borges, and first of all, there's the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Next, Patrick, we have the weekly CAO report on staff assaults.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Legislative issues as reported. The last item we have is a resolution, and the resolution is resolution limiting the number of chief deputies appointed to the county assessor/registered deeds office to two, effective January 1st, 2015. And is there anybody in the chambers that wishes to speak on this resolution? Good morning.
Good morning. Jerry Slusky, 8712 West Dodge Street in Omaha. I'm here on behalf of the Omaha real estate community. This is pro bono work. You might know that I've been involved for 25 years in organizing and chairing a commercial real estate workshop that has sort of become the center point for the real estate business in our area, particularly commercial real estate. I feel connected to that. I came here last year suggesting that the board really think deeply about considering putting the assessor's office and the registered deeds together. I bow to your wishes, which you chose to go forward with. It passed, as we know, and now we also know that the results of the election, at least the preliminary election, are that Diane won, and that, I don't know if there's going to be a write-in, but in the fall presumably she will be the joint assessor/registered deeds. I think it's important, and I do congratulate the board again for three years in a row of no mill levy increase, but I think it's important that you understand how important these two offices are to the real estate community. A lot of you may know that the office of registered deeds was in some disarray when she came in, and I believe that she's done a very good job. I know all the title companies feel much more comfortable about what's going on there, as do the lawyers and people who put together the transactions in our area. And now, the same thing has happened when Roger Morrissey has been in charge of the assessor's office. Our group and many others have worked with the assessor's office to find ways to make the process a smoother process and a more effective process, and a process where taxpayers who might have seen an increase suggested by the assessor's office have a free and open and very fair forum for resolving those differences without coming to you, guys, and having you make the decision when you serve as the board. I just, I'm not lobbying, I'm not suggesting you do anything different. I know that the will of the board today sounds like you're going to take advantage of the statute and terminate or preclude the ability for the registered deeds office to hire a deputy. My point is simply that I would like to have you be concerned about what is a very well-functioning assessor/registered deeds offices today and not do anything to trip up what is going on there so positively. And I might suggest, think about yourself when you came into the county board, and a lot of you have been on this for a long time, and I hope you don't take for granted how little you knew about county government and about county activities and how much time it takes to get up to speed. And whether it was Roger taking over the registered deeds office or Diane taking over the assessor's office, there is clearly going to be a getting up to speed time. And it comes now in January, when those of us, and I do about 150 tax cases a year, our office, with the assessor's office, January, February, March are critical because Roger, to his credit, has opened up our ability to come down and talk about values early on, way before the notices go out, and a chance to temper that back, make an argument, solve it, and move on. And again, without taking up the time of the appeal process, the Tax Equalization Review Commission, which you may or may not know is a complete mess. It takes about two years to get a case through there. And so we've got something good going, is my whole point. And I would just suggest to you that even if you pass this today, that perhaps you'll be thinking about this. And lastly, I'd like to see that the, thinking about this in the sense that, is that a good decision? The last thing I want to say is I think it would behoove all of us, the whole community, the county, this board, all the taxpayers in Douglas County, to have cooperation between the current assessor and the newly-elected assessor/registered deeds in transitioning the change in that department so that it does start in January on a very smooth basis, and Diane is up and running with the experience of Roger and the help of his staff, as opposed to coming in cold. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft.
There might be others to testify.
Okay, you want to wait? Commissioner Morgan?
I just wanted to make a statement that Mr. Slusky may want to respond to, but I wanted him to know. I spoke to him yesterday when you called me. I did talk to Roger Morrissey about that cooperation. He told me he initiated a call, you know, right after the election to Diane Badiato about meeting to work at that. I talked to him again this morning about that, to make sure that they're working together. He's told me that he pledges to do that totally. So if we hear something else with the phone call or something that that's not working well, we'll be involved. But he plans to totally cooperate for the smooth transition, and if somebody's not doing that, we're going to strongly encourage that, and I know I have the other commissioners' support for that. So that should take place.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Anyone else in the legislative chambers that would like to speak on this resolution? Morning.
Good morning. Diane Badiato, registered deeds, Douglas County. And PJ, I'm sorry, I can't see you and Mark as normally, but I had the opportunity to speak with a few of you this morning, and this is a real critical decision that potentially will be made this morning. Can I maybe go like this? And I just, I want to make a plea to the board, is that just like Mr. Slusky had stated, this is a critically important combination of two very, very voluminous and important offices in our whole county that's going to directly affect our property owners. And I would love to reach out to all of you to ask for some relief in this decision. We don't know what we're going to be addressed with come January. I'd like to, I'd like to be a caveat to Commissioner Morgan's comment about a conversation that he had with Mr. Morrissey. We did have a conversation, and actually two, and the comment, the direct comment that I did receive from Mr. Morrissey was that when I take office in January, he can be, I can be assured that the assessor- be, I can be assured that the assessor office will be in tip-top shape. And other than that, we've had, we have had no direct conversation in how to go forward, because he alludes to the fact that in January it will be okay. So I intend to keep honing those relationships and try to, try to get the cooperation from Mr. Morrissey, because I think it's very, very important that we have an unprecedented six months for he and I to work together for the success of this office, which I'm very determined to attain, starting in January. The reason, what I would like to reach out to the board for today is that I would love to explore the opportunity to start off on January eighth, and that's the date I think I get sworn in, so it's actually not January first, but January eighth, having a fully-staffed two offices, because we don't know what type of evaluations, what type of information, and what type of details we're going to run into once I get into that office in January. Right now, we have a very self-sufficient, efficiently-running Register of Deeds side of the office, and I'm assuming we have an efficiently-run assessor's office. But what we don't have is the entwining knowledge of how those two will be successful together. Because we do not co-locate at this point in time due to space damages, is that, right now, I can only be in one place at one time. I would love to have the opportunity for the board to consider a one-year grace period, so that I have the opportunity to get into the office in January. We can all feel comfortable that the efficiencies that we built into the Register of Deeds side of the office, with the guidance of that deputy, I will be able to completely focus on the assessor's side, and with the, all the things that go on in the first quarter of the year in the assessor's office, I will be able to directly divert my, all of my attentions to the excellence of that office, learning the staff, learning their functions, learning the processes that aren't directly, I'm not directly privy to right now. Allow me that one grace, one-year grace period for all of us to see how this is gonna pan out, to the betterment of all of us, so we can have the success instead of being cut off at the knees in January, so we can have a full view look at how it's going to work. I wanna quote a comment that was in June twenty-second, Omaha World Herald, on the comment page, and I want a quote from Senator Marianne, Senator, oh, I just, I wasn't supposed to say that. Commissioner Marianne Borgeson. She quotes, talking about the National, regarding the National Association of Counties, of which she's a representative for, in an article about how the state has really prevented the counties from really succeeding going forward without a lot of interference and a lot of hard work to do what they expect you to do. And she quotes that, "We need to repair the relationship and have a partnership within the state, rather than have an adversarial relationship as we move forward." We have had our bumps in the road, and we really, my olive branch to you, is to pledge to you my support in working together, and I think we can make some good inroads in that. If we need to do that between the counties and the states, we definitely need to do that within our own house. And I am intent on making this office a success. It is a huge endeavor, we've known that for two years, since we first put it on the ballot, but I think that together, we can make a lot of positive steps, and we can be the premier office of leading the way in the state of Nebraska, with two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand parcels of property that we can make it work. But I implore you and request to you that you allow me a one-grace time period, and then we can work together and see where those efficiencies might lie. So thanks so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Before I go to the commissioners, any other comments from the legislative chambers? Morning.
Good morning. Jim Bouger, one-zero-two-five-zero, Regency Circle. I wasn't really planning on making remarks today by ran into Mr. Slusky on the hallway, and have heard the discussion today on this, on this combination and what's been proposed today. And I'm a practicing lawyer, practice actively in the real estate side of the business, and I would agree with Mr. Slusky in the fact that the Register of Deeds Office and the Assessor's Office are certainly running a lot more smoothly here in the last few years. Both are significant, and, you know, in my mind, different types of operations, and I think that what Ms. Badiato has suggested, that there may be a grace period of time for, to see how the co-mingling of the offices work out, might make some sense. And I apologize for not, not understanding the finances and how all that in the past discussions that have gone on in this topic, but they are very important to my practice, to the practitioners of law in the business community, that both offices are running smoothly, that we have good relationships today and the ability to make our practices work the way the offices are operated today, and I would hope that would continue when they're combined, and just wouldn't wanna see any handicapping of that done by cutting back too much staff before those operations are combined. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. I'd like to address something that Mr. Slusky said about Diane doing a very good job. Yes, she has, and she will continue to do a good job. She has probably been studying the assessor's office for the past two years, and she'll have six months. Roger has said that any questions she asks, he will work with her. He's also said that he will work to educate her on some of the nuances of the job, if she wants. But this is an opportunity. Well, one of our goals is to streamline government. That's what the taxpayers have been asking us. And Mr. Slusky and I had a conversation yesterday, and it made me rethink, and rethink, and rethink, and discuss with some people my position, which was heavily toward not appointing this position. And the more I thought about it, the more I came up with these thoughts. This is an opportunity to reassess, restructure, and realign the offices. We feel both offices are somewhat top-heavy. Too many supervisors and not enough worker bees. Not everyone needs to be a manager. So if you encourage your employees to work smarter, work harder, and your managers to manage more efficiently, things should continue going good with good leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I, I think the proposal that was made today by Ms. Badiato is a very reasonable request. And I think, you know, I view our role in this merger as one that is, we are not the hands-on people. I already see us as getting into the operations of the office. I think that is what officeholders do, who are elected in these various positions. When we try to get in, and I'll give you a good example where I failed, when we try to get in and tell the sheriff that he can't have a crime lab, that was Sheriff One, Boyle Zero. And I think it's the same sort of proposition here. We have an office that, we really don't know, you know, who's gonna, who is gonna be the go-to person in the Register of Deeds Office if Ms. Badiato was upstairs in the assessor's office? Who is it that's, that's going to be the point person? I frankly think it should be the chief deputy, and I think she has an excellent one now. And the alternative is to promote someone in the office to become that, that person who runs it, maybe not a chief deputy, but that's probably what, what happened. And, you know, we talked frequently, and we do talk frequently, about the number of supervisors, and I tell you what my impression of it is, and I haven't anybody tell me yet that I'm incorrect on this, is that the way county government worked in the past, it doesn't work this way now, I don't believe, but it worked in the past, is that when someone worked for the county for twenty-five years and had reached all the top levels and pay and all the rest of the benefits and everything, what happened was, they were saying, okay, well, we're gonna make you a supervisor, which will bump you up in pay. You're not supervising anybody. You've got a title, you're a supervisor, but you're not one. It's only done for the purpose of compensating them, and I can see that group of three people going, oh my God, out there, but anyway, that's what happens. And I think that's what took place, I think that's what's took place over the years with previous officeholders, and there are no sins committed, that's the way it was done in that office, and probably in others, if you look. So I think that's one of those issues that eventually Ms. Badiato will work out with our Civil Service Commission, try to figure out some way to make that thing work better, so we don't have such a high ratio of supervisors, who are not supervisors, to employees. To her credit, Ms. Badiato has cross-trained those folks with unions, I think she's got two unions there, but she's managed to work that out because of her, I think, her management skill. She's got folks doing everything, regardless of their titles. It's a team effort down there, and it's remarkable. And she's done things that have, I think, have been very effective for the real estate community. It's been stable. People, the business people need stability, they need competent people handling their records. There's no second chance when you're filing a deed. That can really cause a massive amount of trouble if something's messed up on a deed, and you have a lawyer who comes in and is filing something and it's misfiled, because we don't have the staff there that knows what they're doing, which they do now. So I just don't rock the boat on that, I think we're so fortunate. My, my view of this is that Ms. Badiato is the elected official who survived that primary, and barring anything unusual, will take office in January, and that she's responsible now for those two offices, and she needs to make it work. I really think that it's our, our role in this is not to dictate, you can't have someone down there in that office to run it, who's familiar with it. I don't think that's our role. Now, a year from now, as she suggested, is a good idea. It gives her a chance to get her feet on the ground, to function the office, and come back to us in a budget hearing. We can grill her in a budget hearing about what can you do to cut expenses, what are you gonna do about these supervisors? And I think she'll have a chance, and I think the unions are gonna be cooperative, I really do, I'm hopeful, that you'll see a lot of movement between the two offices, which is a good thing. I think we have a rare opportunity to let a very accomplished elected official to take over this merger, and we should follow her lead. All she's asking for is a year to shake this place out, to get it right, and I think we need to support her, and her requests are not, they're not extraordinary. She's asking us to let, to keep this deputy, whatever the person's name, there's gonna have to be somebody there running that, in her absence, if she's upstairs. I think we have a system that works, I know it's discretionary, according to the law. I think it's the right thing to do, and I think it gives her time to shake things out and come back to us, and then we can add our two cents, and I think as an elected official, as you know, an elected official can take it or leave it. But I think we ought to expect her authority. She was elected for this job, not us.
Thank you. Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. Interesting discussion. As a practical matter, we just approved the budget half an hour ago. This discussion is not going to have any impact on how many employees the Register of Deeds/Assessor will have, and what their job titles are. To grant three, to call three of these employees, however, chief deputies, to the best of my knowledge, there has never been an elected official in the history of the state of Nebraska to have three chief deputies. And we're saying, well, in a year, we can review it. Well, we can review it right now. We're not saying that she can't have people in place to run these departments the way she sees fit. The question is, do we call them chief deputies, all three of them? Do they all serve at the pleasure of the elected official, or do they have a job description and are part of civil service? That's the question, is whether this position is serving at the pleasure of the elected official or is civil service. The position, the funding is still there to create it, the only question we are addressing is, what is the status of that position? And I, I recognize that what we're doing here is unprecedented in terms of the size and magnitude of these offices that are merging, but I am not willing to make the unprecedented move of having one elected official with three chief deputies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? What is the will of the board?
I would move for the approval of the resolution as presented.
Please vote. Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I, I was enlightened by Commissioner Duda's remarks. I guess I'm hopeful now that what could happen is that Ms. Badiato will be able to post an opening for someone to take over, and oddly enough, the person who takes over now is locked in, has civil service, whereas a chief deputy has no such protection, and are normal conditions, that I believe, I don't think any chief deputy has any guarantee, they could be gone tomorrow, it's at-will. So oddly enough, this may give, I guess what we just did may not be the end of the world after all. What she can do is go to the Civil Service Commission and ask for a position to be posted, and hire somebody to do the job. So I guess it's not the end of the world, it's not totally desirable. I mean, you can see the end of the world from here, but it's not that close.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we do have need for executive session with litigation, is that all we have in executive session? Okay, but before we get to that point, we do have a couple of committee meetings. We have a Human Resources Committee meeting in room nine-oh-three immediately following the board meeting, we'll probably take about a fifteen-minute break. And then Chris Rogers has a Child and Youth Services Committee meeting in room nine-oh-three at one o'clock PM. And just to remind everybody, the offices, the Douglas County offices will be closed this Friday, July fourth, in observance of Independence Day. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners will not meet, again, we will not meet on Tuesday, July eighth, and on Tuesday, July fifteenth. Our next regularly scheduled Douglas County Board meeting will be on Tuesday, July twenty-second. With that, may I have a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Just for you, what was the purpose of the exec session?
Litigation.
Just litigation. Thank you.
Please vote.
Pam, what's, which committees meeting fifteen minutes after?
Human Resources.
Okay.
And that is discussion regarding RFP for Workman's Comp Third-Party Vendor.
Okay.
How are we doing?
And our meeting will begin in approximately 15 minutes in room 903.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
RFP on...